And it's been almost a year now since Russia invaded Ukraine and Russian troops have taken thousands of Ukrainian children away from their families.
This bears all the hallmarks of the war crime of forcible transfer, very black and white international law war crime and potential crime against humanity.
Coming up here and now.
The news is first.
Live from NPR News in Washington, I'm Lakshmi Singh. Ohio authorities are preparing to release toxic chemicals from several cars of a train that derailed the village of East Palestine. The idea is to reduce the threat of an explosion. Ohio Governor Mike DeWine says a controlled release seems to be the best option for protecting the public.
Vinyl chloride contents of five rail cars are currently unstable and could potentially explode, causing deadly dispersment of shrapnel and toxic fumes. To alleviate the risk of this shrapnel, North Southern Railroad is planning a controlled release of the vinyl chloride at approximately 3:30 PM.
In about an hour and a half. The controlled release is expected to last anywhere from one to three hours. East Palestine has a population of about 4,700. Everyone living within a one-mile radius of the derailment has been told to evacuate. Officials believe most people have already left. Secretary of State Antony Blinken says the United States is determined to do all it can to help those affected by the earthquake in Turkey and Syria and the many aftershocks that followed. NPR'S Michelle Kellerman reports the needs are great, especially in opposition-controlled parts of Syria.
Secretary Blinken says his team is in close contact with Turkish allies and with humanitarian partners in the region to determine what's needed. A volunteer with the Syrian White Helmets, Omar Al-Samut, tells NPR, his aid group is stretched thin.
We have a number of heavy vehicles, but it's not enough to deal with around 200 buildings on the ground. It's so, it's so much. We have some equipment, but basic equipment cannot do with the rubble.
He says there are hundreds of families trapped in the rubble in a region that's home to several million Syrians uprooted by the war. He's not expecting any help from the Syrian government and knows that Turkey is overwhelmed, too. Michelle Kellerman, NPR News, The State Department.
Local officials say the magnitude 7.8 quake has killed more than 2,300 people and injured more than 8,000 people. Majority of the deaths and injuries are in Turkey. President Biden will deliver a second State of the Union address tomorrow. NPR'S Frank Ordonez reports Biden's speech is largely seen as the unofficial start of the 2024 presidential campaign.
With tens of millions expected to watch, the State of the Union is an unmatched opportunity for President Biden to make his case directly to the American people for his priorities, such as raising the debt limit, the Russian war in Ukraine, and efforts to bolster the economy. He'll talk about the accomplishments of his administration, especially the bridges and tunnels being built and repaired by the infrastructure bill. And while the State of the Union is not your typical campaign speech, with such an audience, it's very much a political speech. And strategists say Biden needs to lay the groundwork for reelection by showing two visions for America, his and that of Republicans. Franco Ordonez, NPR News.
It's NPR. In Ethiopia, followers of the country's Orthodox Church have begun three days of protests amid growing tension between the church and the country's authorities. Michael Kaloki reports at least three people were killed over the weekend.
Clashes in various parts of Ethiopia's Oromia region was sparked after security forces reportedly fired into a church, killing and wounding some people inside the church. Following the clashes, rallies have been held in various cities in the country as well as in the United States, with protesters calling for an end to what they said were targeted attacks of churches. The Ethiopian Orthodox Church alleges the government has been assisting a breakaway faction of the church's clergy from Oromia region, whom they accuse of irregularly appointing a number of bishops. Last week, the church's highest body, the synod, ordered followers to wear black as a sign of protest during a three-day church observance, the fast of Ninhive. For NPR News, I am Michael Kaloki in Nairobi.
A labor court judge in Kenya's ruled the country can indeed sue Facebook's parent company, Meta. A former Facebook moderator filed suit accusing the company of poor working conditions for exposing employees to gruesome content such as beheadings, torture, and rape. Meta wants the case dropped, arguing Kenyan courts do not have jurisdiction over its operations. Aviation investigators in Nepal say the plane that crashed last month had no thrust motion in its engines, meaning no power, as the aircraft was preparing to land in the city of Pukhara, a popular tourist destination. The crash killed 71 people. One other person is still unaccounted for and presumed dead. I'm Lakshmi Singh, NPR News, in Washington.
Support for NPR comes from NPR stations. Other contributors include Fisher Investments. As a fiduciary, Fisher Investments is obligated to act in their client's best interest. Learn more at fisherinvestments.com. Investments and securities involve the risk of loss.
The Radio IQ forecast: Sunny for most this afternoon. Some clouds in areas east. Breezy highs in the upper 40s for Wise to around 58 for Richmond and Danville. Clear skies starting out this evening. Some clouds expected overnight. Lowes in the upper 20s to around 35 for Wise. Tomorrow, some clouds remain with us, still breezy. Warmer conditions, highs in the mid-50s to around 60 for Roanoke and Danville. Still fairly cloudy Wednesday. More clouds to the east, a little breezy, highs in the upper 50s to mid-60s for most, near 66 for Richmond. This is Radio IQ.
From NPR and WBUR, I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC.
And I'm Jane Plaisson in Boston.
Is she about called to order? And I'll ask our clerk, Mrs. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Okay, I will call the roll. Vice Mayor Cobb, Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pretty. And Mayor Lee.
Here. And a quorum is present. I want to say good evening to everybody and welcome to our afternoon session of council. We had a good meeting with our school board this morning, and there's a lot of things on the agenda that we need to deal with today. I'm pleased to recognize Elder Milton Hardy Jr., who is the Associate Pastor of Greater Prior Temple Church, who will lead us in the invocation. And following the invocation, I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. So please stand for Elder Milton Hardy Jr.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear gracious God, we come before you today saying thank you. Thank you for just waking us up this morning. Thank you for our last night's sleep. We thank you for all that you have done for us. And oh, God, we just give you praise and glory and credit for all that you do. On today, God, there's a scripture that says, what shall I render unto God for all these benefits? Well, God, today we, we say we're going to give you better service. We're going to give you better community. We're going to give you better decisions. We have these people that have been selected and they're here to help us make these better decisions, God. We actually bless each and every last one of the people on council and to make the right decisions for the right people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Again, welcome, everybody. I have some announcements to make regarding applications. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for two upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office expiring on June 30, 2023, and three-year terms of office will commence July 1, 2023, and end on June 30, 2026. Incumbent school board trustees are Elizabeth Jamerson and Natasha Saunders. Application and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees, which they are the school board members, are trustees of the Roanoke City School Board, are available on the Roanoke's web page at www.roanokeva.gov. Or you can obtain one by contacting the city's clerk's office in room 456 in this building on this floor, and they will provide you with those applications between hours of 8 AM and 5 o'clock PM, Monday through Friday. The deadline now to receive applications is Friday, March 10, 2023, at 5 o'clock PM. Let me repeat that again. The deadline for applications for being on the school board is March 10, 2023, at 5 o'clock PM. And if you've got any other questions or need some additional information, please contact our city clerk's office at 540-853-2541, or by email at clerk@roanokeva.gov. Madam Clerk, we do have a recognition, presentation, recognition. I think I need to come down on this one.
Michael, you want to?
This is a walk-on. There are some important people.
Yes, sir.
And I want to, we want to recognize, council wants to recognize them today. On December 7, the Virginia Sports Turf Managers Association presented their Parks and Recreation Field of the Year Award to Roanoke's River Edge Park North. Let's give them a hand for that. That's all right. The VSTMA, which is called, is a leader in the sports field industry, providing educational opportunities for members, streamlining industry standards, and recognizing member accomplishments. It is a great achievement to be recognized by an industry like VSTMA, which is, again, the Virginia Sports Turf Managers Association, says Samantha Dickinson, Athletics Coordinator at Roanoke Park and Recreation. This crew pours, this crew pours their heart and soul into the fields and have worked tirelessly to make Rivers Edge the place to play in the Roanoke Valley, and I couldn't be prouder of their accomplishments. This distinction not only recognizes Roanoke Parks and Recreation efforts to provide quality athletic facilities to the community, but will also make an economic impact through hosting regional and national-level sporting events. Rivers Edge Park North began renovations in 2019 and in 2021. Roanoke Parks and Recreation formed a three-person field maintenance crew dedicated to the park. The team has completed educational courses through the VSTMA and has shown great dedication to the management of this facility. The crew includes Adam McKinney and George Bradney, and was led by Crew Supervisor Will Cole, which has since left city employment. Both Will and Adam completed the Virginia turf grass management class and received their certified turf grass professional certification, and George is set to complete certification in 2023. So outstanding work, and if you all get a chance, my colleagues on council drive by and take a look at Rivers Edge North. They are recognized for the truly great work they do. And thank you all. And now I'm pleased to recognize Sir Michael Clark, our Director for Parks and Recreation.
I appreciate it. Thank you, members of council, for recognizing us today. This award is not only a testament to their hard work and, and knowledge and skill set, but also your support and the support of the city managers. We've gone through this renovation process. So we still have some more work to do with the park to finish out that, but I'm very proud of the work that our folks have done in providing this resource to, to our community, especially our young people in the community. So I did want to take an opportunity to introduce the staff that we have with us today. So George Bradney and Adam McKinney, who are both still on the crew now. Will Cole is, is with us as well. I need to point out that because of this work, he got on the radar of the Salem Red Sox and was recruited by them to come work and do field maintenance for, for them. So certainly a great opportunity for him, a big loss for us, but definitely happy for him in his career pursuit. Beside him is our Parks Manager Cindy McFaul, our former Athletics Coordinator Samantha Dickinson, she's now moved over into our Business Coordinator position, Greg Thompson, our Park Management Coordinator, and Patrick Boas, our Recreation Manager. So the reason we have all these people here is that with Will's departure and Samantha's move, we did a small restructuring in the department. So the Recreation folks are their old supervisors, the Parks folks are their new supervisors. So I wanted to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to take part in, in all of this work. So we're very proud of them. Thank you very much for, for having us today.
All right. I want to give council an opportunity. Have roofer, if you have any, anybody in the council room, basement, the train.
Thank you all. Thank you all. I was just driving by there the other day, and I guess the fields are covered right now, right? Can you talk just briefly, Michael, about what the next steps are for the park? Because the improvements there have just been extraordinary.
So the, the focus at the beginning were support amenities like parking and then the field so that we could get, get young people and, and other folks alike playing on, at the park. The next step are more park-like amenities, so putting in walking paths throughout the park, some type of playground, shelter space for events and such. We want to maintain as much green space out there as, as possible, because over the years, while it was in a kind of a holding pattern on what we were going to do with that space, it kind of became an impromptu event site for a lot of events. So many folks have come to rely on that space. So we do want to keep space available for, for some events. Probably won't have large-scale events like Go Fest there again, but for some of the smaller events, having that, that space there. We hope to begin work on many of those this spring.
Yeah. I, I just think it's important for people to know that when you invest so much in, in fields like that, you sometimes have to limit what you can actually do on those fields, that it can't just be a free-for-all to maintain the investment that, that has been made.
That's correct. And the blankets are on there now because the, the grass goes dormant in the, in the winter, turns brown. So it's just as much to protect the fields from just the way the grass grows as much as it is a deterrent to keep people from continuing to play on them while the grass is dormant.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yeah. Mr. Pretty?
Just want to say congratulations to both your current and former members of staff and at being recognized for this. And it just goes to show that we need to be competitive in every department and every job that we have, because if people are recognized, other people are taking them from us.
And congratulations on, well, I don't know. I think it's a promotion. I'm not a Red Sox fan. You know, I.
Is it the records?
I'm an Atlanta Braves guy, but.
He doesn't have to push "no" anymore.
But that's great. That's great. Thank you all so much for what you do. We appreciate it. Thank you, Michael.
Appreciate it.
They were up on the screen.
They were? Oh, okay, good. Because I was looking. Okay. No, I was like, well, nobody saw them.
We have some fantastic people that work for us in the city, and they take a lot of pride in, in what they do. And that's why I may get the award for Mayor of the Year.
You may.
Yeah, right. I guess. No such award that I know of. All right. See, where are we? All right. We're now down to hearing of citizens upon public matters. Now, city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem it appropriate. Now, I'll ask the clerk now, do we have any people signed up to?
Yes, we do. We have three speakers.
Okay. Would you call them in order that they sign up?
Sure. Yes. First is Frida Cathcart. Then we'll have Nikki Tilly, and then Barbara Dirk.
All right. All right. Welcome, Frida.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. I was watching Tyree Nichols' funeral this past week and thinking about reflecting upon the challenging times that have been facing us and our families and our communities and our nation. And thinking about the Bible verse that Vice President Kamala Harris said at the funeral. It was Luke, Chapter 1, verse 79. "To give light to those who sit in darkness and the shadow of death, to guide our feet into the way of peace." And the last few years has been challenging. It's been isolating for a lot of people. Communities haven't been able to gather like they used to be able to gather. A lot of things have been happening virtually on Zoom. You lose that human connection of being together, and we're, we're emerging from that. And as we emerge from that, it's important to be gentle with each other as we reconnect. And because of the isolation and the disconnects, the silos, the inability to communicate with each other, some people are feeling frustrated, confused, agitated, hopeless. And I wanted to say how much I appreciate you all keeping our government going during this time. Lots of times, people are more, point out when things aren't going right rather than to say how amazing it is that we are emerging from this time and the opportunities that are presenting themselves. So I wanted to put that in, in context of, of what I've been witnessing, what I've been out there. I think most of you know I'm fairly involved lots of different places in, in the community. I hear and I see a lot of things, and I see a lot of really good people that care about our community and want to make a difference. And I also see a lot of people that are frustrated and, and feel like they haven't been included. And I know the vision of 2040 is inclusion and equity. And I bring that up for, just recently, there was this great community engagement that, for the Eureka Park Recreation Center that people should be excited about. But I was at a meeting before that where the president of the Melrose Rugby Neighborhood Association said that he hadn't been told about the meeting. They hadn't reached out, and they planned the meeting at the same day and time that their neighborhood has been meeting for years, and how that felt for them in their neighborhood that that had happened. Then there's a lot of excitement about Riverdale and talking to the, the former president of the Riverdale Neighborhood Association, who said that they hadn't been involved at all in that planning. And what a contrast that was with Chris Craft and the Wildwood neighborhood and the development off of 460. So it really hurts some people's feelings when they see one neighborhood's being reached out to and another neighborhood isn't being reached out to and involved. So I've been going to the Roanoke Neighborhood's advocates and talking to people, and we want to revive and resurrect the President's Council, but instead call it the Neighborhood Council or whatever, when people get together, want to call it. But we feel like we need to bring these grassroots community leaders together, and we want to work with the city to connect with them so that there can be more synergy in a positive direction, so there won't be those hurt feelings. I did want to make it, bring to your attention Boxfit. I believe it's going to be on the front page of the Roanoke Tribune. They're ready to have their grand opening on January, February 20th, President's Day. I hope that you all will come there. It's been nothing short of miraculous how Coach Torrey has put that together. When he first went to go to the building, there was no heat in the building, which really set him off course. There's been challenges with insurance and workman's compensation. He started paying for it back in October before they had possession of the building, and I'm going to work with him with the insurance company to get that money back for him. As far as workman's comp, the Virginia law says a sole proprietor that has no employees and that does not hire subcontractors is not required by law to carry workman's compensation coverage. And I understand why the city lawyer told them that they had to have workman's compensation. I don't know if it was a miscommunication, but there's some work that needs to be done there. But it is a time to celebrate and lift each other up and to do better. So I appreciate your time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Nikki Tilly.
Hello. 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 So I'm here to talk about housing, I guess. I don't know where to begin. So I have been, I just got evicted again from, from another apartment because I broke some glass. I got frustrated. I, I don't do that. I've, I've, you know, I've, I've lived in many places. So basically, I have given my blood, sweat, and tears for, for this country, literally. I, I've walked half the planet. I, I've, I've met farmers. I've, you know, I've, I've talked to farmers around the country. I have worked in many restaurants, many, many, many restaurants, and I've seen some horrible things that go on in restaurants. People dropping food on the floor, ripping buns on their crotch and trying to serve them to people, all kinds of stuff. And it's no wonder people are sick, but yet you go to the hospital and I can't get a bed for the night. They kicked me out in the middle of the night. You know, they wouldn't even give me a blanket or anything, or let me sleep on the couch. I got chased out by security. You know, the rescue mission has kicked me out. You know, I get, I get in trouble for sitting around and doing nothing, get harassed by the police because I can't hold a job or I can't, you know, because I have nothing to do. But I don't want to go to the ram house and just sit around or on our own. All these places, they, they give us places to go for the day, but what, you know, what we, I mean, there are so many abandoned houses out there that there's no one there. I don't have any money to pay, but I can read a book and I can fix it, but they won't let me. Permanent supportive housing has been helping me, but they won't help me anymore. So I, I mean, I'm, I'm very tired of sleeping on the streets and sleeping in bathrooms, and it shouldn't be any of that. I don't know, I don't know what else I can do. So this apartment I'm supposed to have, they were going to give me another apartment. And so I put soil around the place. They told me it was electrical. I, I told them I could, you know, possibly help them out. They won't let me. They said it was a stairs, and, you know, I can fix the stairs. There's, there's wood all over the place. I mean, I can find stuff out of the trash and fix it myself. I mean, I know, you know, the basics of that. I just need, you know, wood to put on the stairs and brackets, you know, to put underneath it, you know, to put, put wood so that nobody falls through the stair. I mean, it's very simple, but they said I can't do it. I'm not sure why. I tried to get in touch with Roanoke, Roanoke Apartments, whatever it is that owns the place. They won't call me back. They gave me a piece of paper, which, I mean, that's pretty easy to do, gave me a piece of paper saying that I was supposed to be in January. Well, that, you know, it's February, and I'm still not in there. And they haven't done any work on the place. They said it was apartment one. There is no apartment one. So, you know, the, I, I worked with Ken Shire. So, you know, I worked with Ken Shively. Well, Ken Shively was my last landlord. And, you know, I tried to help him out. I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not quite sure what everyone wants from me. But I, you know, I can definitely read a book and try and fix a problem. And I would love that opportunity to do that because I know there's a lot of feces. I know the city gets a lot of calls. Tim Wilson is one of the maintenance guys. And I know, you know, I've talked to him. I used to live in one of his buildings. And money doesn't, money doesn't work. You know what I mean? Cash money does not do anything, really. I mean, it funds some stuff, but, I mean, it's just, you know, I haven't read that book yet. So that book I haven't found at the library yet. That's kind of a next one. But The Origins of Money. But anyway, you know, it's kind of off topic. But, you know, Tim Wilson, I know he needs a little, a lot of help. He works for an apartment place. And, you know, I'm definitely willing to help out. I don't need paper money, just a place to call my own because the rescue mission, you know, they make it kind of difficult sometimes. You know, it's hard when you have no place to go and you have to go to the rescue mission. And it's just like jail. You know, everybody's talking and, you know, they only give you so many hours for you to sleep. You know, you have to get up at 5:30 or 6 o'clock in the morning. They give you a bed, they give you food, but, you know, the food is not always great either. You know, this is not a complaint. This is just, I would like to help. I would like to see the city improve. I found, is that all my time?
Go ahead, finish your.
Okay. So I found some clean soil that I'd like to help put around some of these houses with all the feces and, you know, and everything because I know that's a problem. So I found some soil, I found some trees, some plants that could possibly go in the pots, you know, along Jefferson and all that, you know, to help with breath because that's what plants do. So that's what I'd like to do. But, you know, my main concern is the housing situation. I signed up for Section 8 Housing 15 years ago. And every house that I went to, there was one in North Carolina, they kicked me out because I couldn't have certain medicine. I was having heart trouble. They kicked me out because I couldn't have certain medicine. There was one in Lynchburg, they kicked me out because I drank a beer. That was Oxford House. You know, little things like this, it shouldn't be that way. We shouldn't have to, you know, walk around eggshells, follow. I mean, I know certain rules, obviously, we have to follow. But, you know, I've served my time. I'm 43. I've done, I've done a lot, I've seen a lot, I've talked a lot, you know. And I've met a lot of people. And I feel like, you know, if, you know, I've worked my butt off. And I'm, you know, it's hard for me to even get up on the bus these days. I'm so exhausted because I've just been, you know. And so, you know, it's, I don't know what we can do to solve the situation, but Hat Team is closing down, permanent supportive housing is closing down. They may not closing down to everyone, but to me it is. And I signed up for all this stuff years ago and I keep getting kicked out of places. And it shouldn't be that way to get kicked out, you know. I mean, this free country, okay, freedom isn't free, that's fine, but I've worked my butt off, nonstop. And I've, you know, I've stopped people from doing a lot of crazy stuff, I feel. And, you know, for me to get evicted, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way. And, you know, it would, it would be great if, you know, had my own place. And I'm not doing this just for, you know, me, myself. I don't know how I could, you know, help other people, you know, any other way. But, you know, just have a bed, you know, a place that I can lay my head and not worry about getting evicted, not worry about, you know, if I lose my job, you know, that I'll still be okay because it's mine. I worked for it. Blood, sweat, and tears I have done. So I don't know how I can help solve the situation. But once again, I'm supposed to be in this apartment a long time ago and I still have not done it. So I'm not sure what else needs to happen. I mean, I can't, you know, I mean, I guess I could sleep on the street for the rest of my life, but I just wish somebody would tell me exactly what I need to do, what I did wrong, what I need to correct. And I, I'm happy to do that. I mean, no problem whatsoever.
I'm sorry you've gotten into this state. I, maybe there's some temporary places we could find for you to go out and not have any place to go.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I keep going to the hospital. People say I can't go to the hospital. Those people, I mean, I went to Virginia Western. I can't even sleep. There are no dorms for Virginia Western. I went to school there, you know. I mean, I would think that you should have a dorm if you go to school there. You know, I mean, the hospital is 14 stories and tons of beds that are just sitting there. But we have to go to the rescue mission where we get harassed and, you know, talked down to. And, I mean, they, you know, all this stuff, fed, you know, food that is just leftover, you know, from, leftover from what? You know, I've talked to harvesters, I've talked to people, I've traveled with people that, you know, did these harvests, you know, have picked the food, have picked the fruit, all this stuff, you know. I mean, I've talked to all of them. I mean, I've, you know, I foraged, I've found my own source of water and everything and I've brought it to people. I haven't done it just for myself. I've brought it to people. Even, you know, Tim Wilson, I was staying at his place. I even brought his cat food, you know. And I'm not talking about just junk food, you know, the crap they usually give cats. I mean, I'm not sure what I'm doing wrong. So, you know, I mean, it's, you know, paper money, I don't, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, that's, I don't have that at this, at this point in time. But I can absolutely read a book and help you fix a problem. I'm not an electrician. I was working on that, though, you know, at my last apartment. But, you know, a lot of things are, they're pretty easy to pick up. I definitely know how to nail a piece of wood into another piece of wood and so forth. And I can paint a little bit. I mean, whatever needs to be done, I'm just, you know, don't want to see, I don't want to see anybody sleep in, nobody should sleep in an elevator shaft or, you know, or in a bathroom. I mean, this, these things just, I don't think should happen.
Well, again, I'm wishing the best for you. Vice Mayor Cobb will meet you out in the back. He'll talk to you about some possibilities.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you. Well, we got the, go ahead.
No, and Mr. Cobb's going to talk to her. I was just going to give her the information to our homeless assistance team who works with individuals in that predicament.
Well, we wish you well, ma'am.
We have one more speaker, Mayor. We have one more speaker, Barbara Dirk.
Okay. Good afternoon, Barbara.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of City Council. And I would be glad, be honored to take you to a Red Sox game. We will cross over to the Salem City Line. But I am bicycling, boating, backpacking Barbara, and I consider myself bike partisan. That I spoke with the TPO and the Regional Commission last week. And so I'd like to encourage you to be aware of the bicycle bills that are proceeding through the General Assembly. Getting close to crossover day, so if you can contact your senators on Tuesday or today so they can vote in support of the bicycle bills that are coming out of the Senate. One of them is, gives you the pedestrians Control Signals applicable to persons riding bicycles and other device. That means that a bicyclist, when all the signals say cross for the pedestrians, the bicyclist can use that time to get across the intersection. They talk about bicycle safety, but truly, these are motorist convenience bills. And that will allow the bicycle to get ahead of the motor vehicles and they won't have, the motor vehicles won't be inconvenienced. There's also a bill that was passed in 2020, Drivers Stop For Pedestrians. Roanoke embraced stopping for pedestrians and our signs. And the medians now say stop instead of yield for pedestrians. But there was some concern in Northern Virginia about the cost. It's being sponsored by SASLO, and I believe that that's coming through the Senate with a yes vote. Empowering the localities to determine if bicycles can proceed without coming to a complete stop. And when you're bicycling, a complete stop is when you take your foot off the pedal and actually put it on the ground. Sometimes people come, cyclists come to intersections and they can stop their bicycle without getting their foot off and look for both directions. And if they don't see any, go on, proceed. And that's very, very positive for moving traffic. Again, that is a motorist convenience place. So if you can encourage our senators, Senator Suterline and Senator Edwards, to support that bill by Senator Deeds. You have, I believe, I forgot to tell you, you have the sheets here in front of you so you can follow me. Then there's a budget amendment. And we thought the budget amendment was in the budget to update the bicycle plan for 2011, but I don't know whether it's the Senate or the House or both that didn't have the budget amendment in there. And would encourage that the bicycle plan for the Commonwealth of Virginia to be updated. Roanoke has lots to be proud of. Roanoke is an M.B.A., Silver Designation, and so it really needs to be there. And Roanoke needs to be the star on the updated bicycle plan. There's trails that are being funded. That last year, we had Trails in I area that got funded. I would encourage you to support trails in other parts of the state, too, because we need to connect our Commonwealth both on-road and off-road. So my ask today is that you encourage the senators that represent Roanoke, Senator Suterline and Senator Edwards, to support these bills that are coming through the Senate probably tomorrow. And one other thing, that, any of you recognize this? Some of you that have, all of you that have been on council before received a key to the city because you are the ones that were elected to unlock the doors and let things happen. We have two new members of City Council. We have Mr. Pretty and Mr. Volason. And so I'm giving them these keys. Now, these keys look a little bit different, but there's lots of doors that need to be unlocked. And perhaps one key won't do it, but another key will. So congratulations on being elected and hopefully you'll be able to open doors to the city for the citizens of Roanoke. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Does that conclude our speaker?
Yes, sir. It does.
Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda is the approval of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately.
Move the Consent Agenda.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Oh, I do, sorry. I was getting the chairman out. I have an amendment for the January 3rd minutes on the Consent Agenda that it just reflects that on the December 5th minutes, it does note that David Harrison's email is on by on the clerk's office. That note was excluded from the January 3rd minutes regarding the subsequent letter that he sent dated January 1st. So this clarifies that and then captures a conversation that follows and move to waive the reading of that amendment and have it accepted.
Your voice kind of faded off on me.
I moved to waive the reading of the amendment, just have it be included in the minutes for January 3rd. So is there, certain procedure?
You can approve amendments as amended.
As amended, yes.
For January 3rd.
Second, yes.
All right. It's been approved, the amendment, and I'll ask Madam Clerk, please call the roll on it.
All right. Vice Mayor Cobb? All right, he's out. Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the Consent Agenda is approved. All right, we're going down now to item number five on the regular agenda. Public hearings, there are no public hearings. Item number six is petitions and communications. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for working me down. All right, item number six is petitions and communications. I don't know, 61 is FY23 SRO Grant Program. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing acceptance of the School Resource Officer Grant made to the City of Roanoke Sheriff's Department by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right, is there any discussion among members of council? Mr. Pretty?
I just have a few questions. I don't know if the City Manager is able to answer them.
I will try.
Hopefully. So this states that the SROs would be managed by the Sheriff's Department, but are saying that we also have SROs that are managed by the Police Department?
Correct, correct. And there actually are multiple grants that we have applied for and secured. This is just the most recent. This goes to offset the costs for those SROs that are actually under the Sheriff's management.
Okay. And as I understand, these funds were wholly provided by the state, didn't require us to have a cost match in order to be utilized.
That is correct, that is correct. And will actually be, normally, these costs would be borne by the schools, you heard this morning at the briefing. And so what this is doing, it's allowing an increase in the service level without affecting either our budget or the school's budget. Now, what will be interesting, of course, is how sustained these funding, these funds are.
My understanding as well that these funds will be available for a few years at least. They'll be completely borne by the state before we'll have to take on the cost or the school board will have to. That's my only questions.
All right. Any other comments or discussion? Very none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance appropriating funding from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services to provide funding for school resource officer positions, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any discussion or comments by members of council? Very none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number seven is reports of city officers and comments of City Manager. And there's a 718 is an item recommended for action. The acceptance of a $50,000 grant award from the Governor's Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund Infrastructure Grant Program in support of Leap's Food Hub. There is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund Infrastructure Award of funds in the total amount of $50,000 to support the local environmental agriculture project Leap for food, for the Food Hub project, authorizing City Manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and the City of Roanoke, and authorizing the City Manager to take certain other actions in connection with the above matter.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments by members of council? Very none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Governor's Agriculture and Forestry Industries Development Fund to Development Fund to be awarded to local environmental agriculture project Leap, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number B is the acceptance of a National Endowment for the Arts, which NEA, Grants for Arts Projects Awards. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Grants for Arts Projects, funding from the National Endowment for the Arts to the City of Roanoke, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
All right. Is there any discussion or comments from members of council? Vice Mayor?
I just wonder if Mr. Jackson would be willing to talk a little bit about this and just how this continues the great work that arts community is doing.
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council. We, this year we've made the, the Year of the Artist, and we've got artists and residents working around the community. We've got about 30 artists under contract doing projects that advance justice, wellness, and inclusion in the community. At the same time, we're doing this work, we've got to be planning ahead. So we've also applied for funding to continue the Artist and Residence Program. So with this money, we'll put a call out and an application process and invite artists to apply to be part of our efforts in forming stronger relationships with neighborhoods and including the arts as building stronger neighborhoods.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson, I don't know if you got a lot to, I'm sure you're involved with it, but there's a lot of beautiful art around here. I'm seeing things all across in each buildings and everywhere. So thank you for your input in that process.
Oh, it's, thank you, Mayor. It's, it's a community effort. And we just talked about Rivers Edge North, and we've got a call out right now. We're going to have a mural up on that wall soon. And we hope that it's contagious, and it's not just people putting art in public places, but people are improving their properties and cleaning, cleaning up the neighborhoods as well. We think we can make, do a whole lot together.
Thank you for your leadership in that area. All right. Any other comments or discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon, I'm sorry, Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. All right. A budget, we have a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the federal government, National Endowment for the Arts Grant, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion or comments by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number C is the approval of revision to present for art guidelines. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution amending Resolution Number 36076-100302, adopted October 3, 2022, to present for art program guidelines, and Resolution Number 37635-120406, adopted December 4, 2020, 2006, the public art policy, and authorizing the city manager or his designate to take such further action and/or execute such, such additional documents as may be needed to implement such amendment and to administer and enforce such amended guidelines and policy.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. Item D is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Program funding hazardous materials. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Grant hazardous, hazardous materials to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
All right. An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for hazardous materials, emergency responses, and training and development, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item number E is the acceptance of the, acceptance of 2023 Violence Against Women Act, V Stop Grant. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the 2023 V Stop Grant made to the City of Roanoke by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services, and authorizing execution of any required documentation on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by members of council? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia for the Police Department Domestic Violence Program Grant, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among members of council? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number F is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Program Funding, Technical Rescue. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Emergency Management State Homeland Security Program Grant Funding, Technical Rescue, to the city from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management, and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right. Thank you. Is there any discussion from members of council? Very none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. Thank you. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for equipment and supplies for the regional technical rescue team, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Is there any discussion among members of council? Very none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds, I'm sorry, Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Item G is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Emerg, Emerg, Virginia Department Emergency Management Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Funding to the city, and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right. Is there any discussion or comments by members of council? Very none. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance. Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Emergency Management for local emergency management performance, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 grant fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Is there any discussion by members of council? Comments? Very none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item H, H is the acceptance of Virginia Department of Health EMS Training Scholarship Funding. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution accepting the Virginia Department of Health EMS Training Scholarship Grant Funding to the city and authorizing execution of any required documents on behalf of the city.
All right. Any discussion or comments from council? Mr. Volason?
Figure I shake it up a little bit. I just had a quick question for Chief Hoback. It's a, how much does a typical EMS, you know, how much does it cost to get that certification these days? I'm wondering how far this scholarship goes.
Thank you. Typically, the registration for paramedic classes, and that's what we're talking about here, ranges from 6,500 to 9,500. The scholarships are awarded based on need, so it's anywhere from $5,000 to $6,200 that is awarded based on the individuals. And this time, we chose to have it awarded to the city since we're offsetting the cost of providing the paramedic class associated with the VCU program that we are contracted with, as well as the Rafford Program running at Rafford University. So it really depends on need of the individual.
Awesome. Is there still a need for paramedics? And how dire is that need?
It is. We are, we are in a great need for paramedics. We currently have 15 in class right now, hopefully to graduate sometime this summer. So we are, we'll have another paramedic class following that one. And hopefully, we'll be able to get full staff by then.
Thank you.
We have the people. We just don't have them trained to get to paramedic.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Any other comments, questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes. All right. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Office of Emergency Medical Services and Virginia EMS Scholarship Program, amending and re-erdaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 Grant Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Very none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Chief and David, thank you all for coming. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right. Now, we're down to item I, which is approval of pay ordinances. There are three measures. I need a motion on the first ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending the pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, which became effective July 1, 2022, adopted by city council on May 9, 2022, ordinance, by ordinance number 42355050922, to repeal and replace the bilingual employee pay incentive program adopted by the council, by the city council, on August 1, 2022, by ordinance number 42414-080122, providing an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor. I did have a question. According to the report, the measure that was just read was supposed to be ordinance number two. That ordinance number one was for the Fire EMS Phase Three?
No, she's reading it the proper way.
Okay, so the, so the report needs to be corrected?
Report would need to be corrected.
Okay, no problem. I was just following your report.
Because if you look at it, and the easy way to follow is the first one starts with 47, then you go down to the second, and it reads, it's amending 48 and 49, and then finishes with 50. And that keeps them in the proper order.
I see what you're saying. Just correct your report.
Well.
Well, whoever needs to correct their report because it has it in the different order. Okay, no problem. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on this ordinance.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Mr., Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the ordinance passes. All right, uh, I need a motion on the second ordinance.
Move the second ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title of the paragraph.
An ordinance amending the pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, which became effective July 1st, 2022, adopted by city council on May 9th, 2022, by ordinance number 42355050922, to add new supplemental pay incentives for qualifying lieutenant, first lieutenant, captain, and battalion chiefs of the Fire EMS Department. amend Paragraph 24 of the pay plan, providing for an effective date, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council?
Mayor, if I, if I may, um, this is probably as good a spot as any to insert kind of the presentation. It's related, uh, to what's in here, but also related to the subsequent ones. Um, so it's, if it's okay, I'll, I'll walk through this presentation.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to give a little bit more insight into both, uh, what's kind of happening with these ordinances, as well as more broadly, what's going on, uh, update-wise with, uh, with compensation. And much of this is building off of what you all have helped us do recently, as well as what may be forthcoming in the next couple of budget years also. Um, what's getting passed around is items that you already have received electronically. I just wanted to give you paper copies of that. One is a copy of this presentation, the other is a copy of the compensation study, um, the, the non-public safety compensation study that was done, um, for the city. But I thought, um, this was as good a time as any to kind of insert into this discussion both a reminder of what has occurred so far and what lies ahead as well, some of which is being implemented with these ordinances, including this one that's pending, um, before you as well. And I think it's necessary to sort of set the stage of what you are helping us, um, try to address, what we're trying to overcome. Um, this is a, a challenge that has been long in the making. Um, the graphic that I have on the screen, um, both, um, exemplifies that challenge and in some ways, the reason for that challenge. Um, I've included, over the course of the last ten years, um, the wage increases that were provided to our employees. And as you can see, they range from zero, um, up to this current budget year of five percent, um, increase. The reason I've circled the ones in red is if you look across that ten-year timeframe and what the cost of living increase has been during that ten years, and simply divide it out by those ten years, each of those years that are circled in red didn't meet that. Um, further, when you go out and look at, um, the amount of growth in salaries for, um, government, local government employees, um, it also falls in that same, that same category. So in those, um, six years, um, out of those ten years, there was, basically, we were unable to provide our employees pay increases that kept pace with inflation. And of course, the significance of that, um, is obviously in that year, but it's cumulative. Um, obviously, if there is, uh, if inflation is running at a pace of two and a half, three percent across that period of time, and you go two or three years with one or two or zero percent increases, that just continues to compound, um, on itself. And so that's one of the reasons why we find ourselves currently in the situation that, um, we are in, in terms of our competition, or our compensation, being below market, um, pretty much across the board, um, but in, certainly in most of our, uh, most of our areas. The graphic below is one we've used repeatedly. We actually just used it earlier in the, um, uh, in the briefing on the budget, and gives one reason why that is the case. Um, it isn't as if you and the administration through all those years haven't been seeking to provide those increases. It is the reality that even as our revenues were growing, and in some instances were, were stagnant, but most years growing, what we could buy with that revenue continued to decrease, and continues to decrease, continues to be eroded by, um, by those inflation, um, rates. So what we're trying to tackle, we've been trying to tackle over the last couple of years, and what we will continue to try to tackle over the next few, has been many, many years in the, in the making. And, um, and therefore, both requires a heavy lift, um, that has its own consequences, um, and benefits, as well as introduces some risk that I'll talk about, that we've talked about before, and I'll talk about again, um, as we go through this. This, this process started, really, a few years ago with a kind of a, um, data collection and competitive comparisons. Um, we knew intuitively that we were, um, behind the market. Some of that was exemplified by increasing vacancies and turnover rates, um, but just even the fact that as we were hiring people, um, the expectations for, for salaries. However, we wanted to base these decisions on, um, on data and base them on, really, what our market is that we're competing with, um, in that case. And so we secured the services of two different firms, one of those being Gallagher or the other Berkeley Group, um, to assist us in compensation analysis, um, around specific areas. So we did, there was one compensation analysis around public safety, there was one around non-public safety, and then one specifically around technology, um, positions. So those are the, the studies that we, um, used. As I have mentioned before, and as we showed on the screen previously, our initial focus, um, this was actually before these studies were completed, was to, um, focus on increasing our cost of living percentages. So those are the years we were able to do two-point-seven-five, three percent, and even five percent, with the five percent being, um, the largest that had been provided through the staff in over a decade. Um, that was our first effort. That, of course, was, um, some of that was rudely interrupted by COVID. We had to stop, um, at that point while we reassessed what, what the consequences of COVID were going, um, to be. Um, so that was the first effort. Second effort was actually with your assistance, we were able to increase our minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour, four years ahead of the General Assembly's direction or, or ultimately requirement. That allowed us to be able to address at least those most entry-level positions that we had. So think of the folks that are, the, um, the folks that do trash collection, the folks that are custodians, those, those folks, um, that tend to be the lowest paid in our organization, that allowed us to elevate those, um, those prices, or those salaries. Um, we also were able to supplement all of that effort through a series of cash bonuses, as well as additional work benefits. So this included things like flexible work schedules in some cases, um, as well as some other, um, benefits oriented around health and wellness, and, and some other, um, items as well. So even in that year that we were unable to provide a pay increase, which I think was twenty-one due to COVID, we were able to provide a series of, um, bonuses, of cash bonuses during that, um, time as well. Um, you all and we have prioritized the public safety step pay plan in three phases, starting in FY22 last year, continuing this year, and concluding next year, and I'll come to that in just a few moments. And then we're about to initiate the non-public safety increases, which similarly is expected to take at least three phases, beginning with next year FY24, and working its way through, um, over a course of, again, a couple of years. On the public safety, um, pay plan and the addressing that, we had three objectives, primary objectives associated with that. One of those was to increase compensation so as to improve recruitment and retention. Um, you all recall, there was a period of time in our, um, police department that we were as high as sixty, um, vacancies within the, uh, the department. I can say that at last count, we were at about thirty-three vacancies. So some of what we've been able to put in place is beginning to make, um, some difference, but we still have a ways to go associated with that. So that was one objective, was to improve recruitment and retention. Um, second objective was to increase predictability and compensation. Um, and this was an effort in conversation with our public safety, um, folks. Prior to the step pay plan, public safety received whatever it was, an increase along with the rest of the organization. So if we received across the organization a two percent pay raise, so did public safety. If it was a one percent, so it was for public safety. The step pay plan separates those two groups now. So public safety is on a step pay plan where it's predictable. They can look out literally years and understand that if the budget is sound, what they would be able to advance step by step, and not be tied any longer to what the percentage increase is or is not with the, the rest of the organization. That is also true, and that they can look upward in promotions and understand what a promotion, uh, might bring in terms of, um, compensation. And then the third objective was to address compensation compression. Obviously, based on the pay increases that I was able to show you in the previous slide, as we bring new people in, they command a higher salary each time they come in because the market is moving, and our individuals are, are locked in those lower increases. So you start seeing the bottom of each of those pay grades catching up to, um, to those others. So those were the, the three objectives that we had going into, um, into the public safety compensation efforts. Um, so we've been implementing it with your help as we've moved along, and I just want to quickly touch on, um, what has been implemented and what that has meant. Phase one started in FY22, and that was for police, fire, EMS, and the sheriff's office. That included new starting pay. Um, again, we adopted the step pay plan for the first time, and we moved all personnel to the minimum, to the new minimum compensation for rank, and we provided bonuses. Um, those bonuses were geared toward retention. So any officer, um, that stayed over a period of time, received, um, that, that retention bonus. So that was, that was phase one. And again, in FY22. Phase two was, uh, is this year, in this approved budget, again, for police, fire, EMS, and the sheriff's office. We moved fire, EMS, and sheriff's office personnel to the midpoint of their target compensation. So in the step pay plan, we had identified, um, through the studies that had been done, where every personnel was going to ultimately end up at, on the scale at full implementation. This moved them midway there, um, for fire and for the, fire EMS and for the sheriff's office. Um, for the police, for the police, we were able to move, uh, all personnel to the target compensation. So we were actually, with your help, and, and honestly, with funding from the state through the HB 599 funding, with the increase that they afforded us, it allowed us to move, to advance on our police funding. So we were able to do what was going to be three phases for police in two phases. So with this year, we had all of our officers parked, if you will, in their final, um, destination. Of course, we've given briefings on that before. That elevated the, uh, the salaries, um, for all of those positions, and, and next year, they'll simply move on to their next, um, item on their step pay plan. Um, it also has, uh, afforded us the opportunity to do a mid-year head start for paramedics. Someone just asked the question of the chief as to how are we doing in terms of vacancies for paramedics. And as he pointed out, we actually have the people currently in place, but because we had a large number of folks that had retired, we're kind of working our way through that. And we need to be certain that we keep them, and that we recruit the next classes that, that come in. And so that is allowing us to do a couple of things with paramedics. So, um, with this head start, what we're doing is we are moving all of our paramedics to their, um, final location, their target compensation, in effect, six months in advance. So that's what we would be doing in '24. We're moving them up, um, six months earlier into that compensation. We are also, and this is the ordinance that was just introduced, we are also introducing, um, additional or enhanced supplements for officers that serve as paramedics. So we have officers literally all the way through the ranks, from lieutenant all the way up to battalion chief, who are active, um, paramedics. They're working on the, the ambulances and responding to calls. We have now with, if, once approved, if approved, the action that is in front of you will create a supplement for those officers that are serving as paramedics. Not only will they move into the step pay plan, they will also receive a three-thousand-dollar supplement for paramedics and a sixty-five-hundred-dollar supplement, um, for those that are advanced care, um, paramedics. There is a cap on the number of advanced care paramedics. On the others with paramedics, the more, the better, um, as many paramedics as we're able to move through the organization as possible. So that's phase two. That's happening this year, some of which happened with the approved budget, some of which you're approving, um, hopefully today, and some of which will, um, also go into effect, um, after this meeting, um, as we move forward. It doesn't require additional council action. It's administrative that we can, uh, we can proceed, um, forward. And I'll come back to that one in just a moment. Phase three, which is what we anticipate including in the FY24 budget proposal, again, for police, fire, EMS, and the sheriff's office. Um, again, we will complete the movement of fire, EMS, and sheriff, sheriff's office personnel to the target compensation. So even though we're able to kind of head start the paramedics, the rest of the firefighters need to be moved into their target compensation, and we will be proposing that as part of the FY24, um, uh, budget. Sheriff's personnel, they're at the midpoint right now, so they'll need to move to their final target as well with that. And of course, as mentioned, the police will move to their next step, um, in their, in their pay plan. Future phases beyond, um, '24, probably beginning in '27, we'll have to revisit the overall scale and see if there is a need to adjust it based off of cost of living. We really cannot afford to do that between, um, next year and '27 because our focus, again, will be on the non-public safety employees, and we need to be able to dedicate the funds associated with that. So what, what has all of this, um, meant? Um, what it has meant for, um, public safety is, we have been able, from the beginning to where we are, um, in '24, where, where we hopefully will be in '24, we have been able to increase the, uh, police salary and benefits, um, somewhere around five million dollars, approaching five million dollars in additional compensation, in addition to the bonuses. And the bonuses were, I think, upwards of about six thousand dollars when you added the three that we did together. Fire EMS, um, we've been able, when all is said and done, we'll have been able to increase salaries by four and a half million dollars, um, and also, again, bonuses. The sheriff, we're not, we're just beginning now to work through, um, their final placement, but we believe that will end up some, being somewhere around two million dollars additional salary and benefits, again, plus the bonuses, um, that we have as well associated with that. I should say, too, the sheriff's office has also benefited from action taken by the General Assembly, um, which has increased both their starting pay, as well as provided some others. Happy for the deputies, but it does wreak havoc on our step, on our step pay plan. We have to keep making adjustments on it as it's kind of a moving target. Um, so all in, somewhere around eleven million dollars has been provided in additional compensation for our public safety, um, personnel. And again, that is designed to, one, bring them back up to the market so that we're competitive, um, both in retention and recruitment, and, two, to be able to try to actually, as quickly as we can, fill the, um, the vacancies that exist, particularly in the, uh, in the police department as, um, as we move forward. And again, there's several other benefits, as I've already mentioned, in terms of predictability and those, um, those types of things as well. I should say that, um, we've gotten this far, um, really by working closely with the chiefs, both the police chief, as well as the fire chief and the deputy chiefs, and the associations with police and with fire. Um, that has gotten us, um, to this point. Right after this meeting, um, the chief, the fire chief, will be meeting, um, and providing information with each of the, uh, fire department personnel. So what they'll be able to do is they'll know two things. One is obviously the paramedics will hopefully receive the supplement that, um, we've talked about, and that will come, um, effective in their February paychecks, um, as well will those that are being placed in kind of their, their final compensation. That will come in their February paychecks, retroactive to January. But more importantly, the other officers will know, even though it's a twenty-four budget item, they will know where the intent is that they'll land. So all of the personnel will receive, um, that information as we move forward. Same will be, uh, we'll be working with the sheriff now, um, as we start to proceed and, and, and completing the work on the sheriff's side of things with that. So that's the public safety piece. I want to turn now to, um, all the non-public safety employees and the work that's, um, both happened and is underway. Kind of similar, we have objectives, um, that have been outlined in this. Top of the objectives are to increase compensation to improve recruitment and retention. As you all know from previous, um, discussions and at your budget retreat, the overall vacancy rate has increased across the organization, as it has, um, frankly, everywhere in the country. If you paid attention to the January jobs report, um, you know, we're in an economy that has essentially no unemployment, and five hundred thousand more jobs opened up. Um, there are still way more people, um, way more job openings than there are people, and so certainly is putting pressure, um, on, on our workforce as much as anyone else's. So that was objective number one. Objective number two is to acknowledge increased demand on the current workforce. And this is a statistic that probably not many of our, um, community know, um, but I think it's important, which is, in two thousand and eight, so think how long ago that was, and all that has changed in the world since two thousand and eight, this organization had one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three FTEs. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, today, this organization has one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one FTEs, which means in the course of that fifteen-year period, um, as we have, um, if you imagine, all the things that have changed, um, in our service requirements, in our demands, and mandates, and expectations, we are actually doing all of that with less people than we had, um, even all the way back in two thousand and eight. Um, and that means folks are having to work harder, they're under additional stress, um, and, um, that wears on folks as you, um, work your way through. And while doing so, we keep getting further and further behind the market. So objective number two was to acknowledge that and to begin to respond to that. And then the third, just as it was with public safety, is to address the compensation compression, because same thing was happening, obviously, with all of the others. So in terms of implementation, um, we had kind of what I'm referring to as sort of a phase A. Thankfully, with your support, um, this year's budget included five hundred thousand dollars that we could use to, um, provide a head start. So in effect, providing some employees, um, the last six months of this year, kind of an advance on what we were going to try to do, um, with the rest of the workforce in '24. That has allowed us to, um, respond to about a hundred and seventy, um, positions within the organization, so just under ten percent of the organization, um, to address some of the most pressing needs in, um, our DSS, um, Department, DOT, our Department Transportation, our, um, Technology, as well as Solid Waste and E911. And of course, you all are familiar with what those, um, have involved. But essentially, what it's done is it's allowed us to take a collection of employees, and for the last six months of '23, advance them to the minimum of their new pay grade, which is what we're hoping to request for the remainder of the employees as well. That work, um, is already, um, underway, already been communicated. It also will be, um, those increases in pay will appear in the February, the last February paycheck, retroactive to January. So that'll cover the last six months. So that was kind of phase A. Phase one, which is, again, what we anticipate, including in the FY24 budget request, is just as, um, it was the first phase with public safety, is to, um, to the extent we're able to, to move all personnel to the min, new minimum for pay grades, um, moving forward. And for those individuals that are already in excess of that minimum, which we do have some, um, in there, we will have to figure out an alternative, either a flat dollar amount or a percentage. Still working, um, through those, um, those pieces as well. There may also be a few select positions that are so competitive, um, that we actually need to look at mid- need to look at midpoint rather than minimum. But for the most part, minimum is the target. And this, again, is minimum, as I mentioned at the budget briefing, minimum to meet market. We have another number to actually lead the market, and we simply cannot afford to do that. So we'll be focusing on at least catching everyone up to the market. So that's phase one. Phase two, which would be in FY '25, would focus to move personnel, again, to the midpoint of their target compensation. And some personnel may actually move to their target compensation if they were one of those in that first phase moved to the midpoint. And then finally, phase three, which hopefully would be in FY '26, would be to move all personnel to their target compensation. And then again, just like with public safety, future phases are when we would then look at, how do we keep that system relevant? And that starts to look at cost of living adjustments and other kinds of adjustments pending budget. So what does all of this mean? So far, what it has meant for that head start is about $800,000 of increases. Everybody should say, wait a minute, we authorized $500,000. So let me explain that, that fortunately, a collection of those employees that were included in that from DSS qualify for reimbursement, we qualify for reimbursement from the state for a portion of their salary. So we were able to actually stretch those $500,000 further. So the benefit is worth about $800,000 or slightly more than that, but the costs are still within what was budgeted for us, for the city. And FY '24, we expect that this will be, it says $2 million on the screen, I think, did I change that? Yeah, $2 million. I think that number actually may be more along the lines of $4 million once we get into it. Again, we're still working through those numbers as we proceed. And then FY '26, or, I'm sorry, '25 and '26, that range is somewhere between an additional $5 and $9 million. Again, until we get further into the development of it, we don't know exactly what that will be, but that will start to firm up very quickly because it is my objective that as we move into '24, all the employees know where our targets are. Doesn't mean that we can guarantee that because obviously, all of this is dependent on the availability of revenue each year as we move along. A few other considerations in this process are, should go without saying, but that we are a service provider. That service is provided predominantly by people. Everything that we do is done by people. You saw folks here today who are responsible for taking care of all of the grass that is in our fields and in our parks. They're an example of that. Obviously, we've talked a lot about our firefighters, our police officers, our paramedics, but go through the list. It takes accountants to do that. It takes folks working in human resources. It takes folks working out in the field for DSS and so on. So most of our budget goes toward people, and therefore, most of our focus in the last couple of years and this year is similarly on people. There are some budget concerns. Again, you know, as I mentioned, as we try to address an issue that's a decade or more in the making, we are, to borrow the phrase, getting out, leaning quite a way over our skis here. And so there is a risk associated with this that I have shared with the directors and shared with the employees as well, which is if revenues do not continue to expand, even if they stagnate, the ability to actually sustain what we're trying to do comes into question, and that will result in either scaling back of this, back on this, or if we get too far out ahead of this and it really turns significantly, that would result in a reduction of service levels and of personnel. So we're pushing as far as we possibly can, pushing in some ways right up to that comfort level, if not beyond. As we mentioned in the budget briefing, there are other significant costs that we also have to take into account for this. As was mentioned before, our pension fund is requiring additional contributions to it. There are increases in health insurance that we need to be able to absorb, even if we only absorb a portion of those, we still need to be able to do that. And of course, the cost of debt service continues to increase. We also have retirees that we need to be also considering, how do we respond to those needs as well? So all of those are other costs that have to factor into this discussion as we work through. And then, as was exhibited by the slide at the very beginning, we continue on this erosion of purchasing power. Even as our revenue grows, it too, no different than our household, is affected by inflation. And so what that money is worth and what it can buy is less than what it was before. And we simply have to accommodate that and deal with that as we work our way through. Next steps in this process is obviously the action that you have on the couple of ordinances that remain as a piece of this, as well as ultimately, the FY '24 budget is our next step. And that'll be the next piece of this as we bring forward to you all, that, those requests and those recommendations. What you have, again, in front of you is the copy of the presentation. You also have a copy of the Gallagher study, which was the study that was done for the overall organization. That was emailed to you as well. There has been a revision in the Gallagher, so I need to send you another digital version of that as well. The paper version is accurate that you have, but I need to send you the digital version as well. As I mentioned, after this meeting, there are memos and letters going out to everyone in the fire service so that they know what these most recent changes are, although I will say, much of that has already been relayed to them through contact with the chiefs and the association. This will just kind of formalize that. And then there will also be an email going out to all of the organizations, so all of the employees kind of know where we are in this process as we move forward. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have and look forward to both, hopefully, positive votes on the ordinances that still remain tied to the pay plan, as well as hopefully, us working together and figuring out what we can make happen in the FY '24 budget, which, again, is going to be a heavy lift. So we've got to try to figure out how to make that happen, and we're just in the beginning stages of that.
Thank you, Bob. I'm going to start with my right if we got any concerns or questions. That's pretty.
Were we taking comments on both ordinances? Another two that are, there's one regarding Paige generally, and then the one regarding the police department.
Yeah, there was no real good way to insert this discussion, so I'd be happy to answer questions on either one of them.
The, see, the bonuses for the police department are focused on referrals that were made between July 1st, 2022, and December 31st, 2022. Was this something that was communicated to the police department prior before that, as an incentivization back then? Or how is this incentivizing any hiring now if we're just going to be rewarding something backwards? Or is this something that's being looked at, that's being included in our future budget to be adopted, but also only for a six-month time period? We're really quite focusing why the six-month time period. And I'm sure we should already know how many police officers that was. How much money is this relevant for?
Yes, it's a good question. So what Luke is referring to is the, in the, one of the ordinances coming up is we have kind of bound at the timeframe associated with a referral bonus. You all may recall that for paramedics and for police officers, we have a recruitment bonus. So folks that come in and actually join us as a paramedic or join us as a police officer qualify for a certain amount of recruitment. There was a very brief window in which the chief authorized some referral bonuses for, in the police department. That was not in any of the supplements, and we want to honor those. It is not an incentive that we believe is necessary going forward. We think the recruitment bonuses is sufficient to be able to do that. So this is simply to honor that commitment that we had for a couple, and there were only a couple of referral bonuses attached to it. So that's the reason for the timeline.
So this was an offer that was made and then realized that it just wasn't something that was already in here?
Correct. And these are for the officers that made those referrals.
Okay.
All right. Vice Mayor, you don't have any comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cowell. So basically, you guys have done an excellent job. I know it was pretty tough because we had a lot of employees that we had to move into at least meeting the market or up to minimum wage. So you're looking, based on your phases here, you've got a phase A and all the way to phase one through three. By 2026, we are hoping, based on revenues, that we will have folks in the targeted compensation by then.
That is correct. So what the, if, again, pending both revenues and your approval and support, what the ultimate goal will be for our non-public safety employees is exactly what we've been able to do for our public safety employees, which is to walk them through a process where they start by getting up to that new minimum, then they move to the midpoint of their target, and then they end up in the target. And when all of that is done, they should be nested, if you will, inside those new pay plans so as to be competitive in the marketplace, which today, we do not believe that they are.
And so what, I know this is just to meet the market and meet the minimum, and I know that we have a challenge ahead of us, but what would it take in order for us to exceed the market minimum, to start being competitive so that we, like, you know, our CPS and some of the others, can recruit, retain, and attract excellent employees?
If we were, if we were to lead the market across the whole, we would take what, and I'm just using generic numbers because I don't have them in front of me, but take something that we expect will cost, say, $9 or $10 million, and you could easily double that cost.
Oh, really? It would take that much?
Yeah. And again, that's across the board. That doesn't mean that we won't look at some positions that are highly competitive. I'll use an example and say, folks that work in technology is highly competitive. And so actually, in the case of the technology folks, for the head start, for example, we've actually moved them to the midpoint of the new proposed range rather than the minimum because we already know what's competitive and what's not in that market. So we may still do some tweaking on a few positions, but it would be substantially beyond, I think, our, any kind of comfort level or our means to do that, to go beyond that across the board. Now, I will say, it will still make us competitive because we will be in the range. We just won't be the leaders in that arena. We'll be right there with everyone else. We just won't be out ahead of everyone else.
Well, that's okay. I'm just glad we're getting there. And thanks to you and your team and all the work that you've done to get us to that point. I know that compensation study was a pretty arduous task, but it had to be done, and I'm glad that we're working on it.
Yeah, and I thank you all because, again, we couldn't do any of this without the approvals of all the steps that we've had, whether they're bonuses, salary increases, even the money to do the compensation study, and certainly want to acknowledge the work that human resources and others have been doing in trying to manage this process. And, you know, I have to say, you know, this has been a stressful process for the staff as well. We've, we were fortunate enough to benefit from, again, the highest pay increase in a decade this year, but it also comes in a time when inflation is, you know, sort of off the chart. So certainly, the patience that the staff has exhibited is helpful as well.
And, Mr. Cowell, this is not for you so much as for some of our residents who are listening. I tried to explain to some of the folks that we work with and some of my friends that this did not happen this year. It did not happen last year. This is a result of decades of, you know, being at that bottom level. And I think that this is a major effort on our part to try to get us to where we need to be. And so it's not going to happen overnight, but I think we've done a tremendous job in trying to get us there. But I just have to remind people that this did not occur over the last couple of years.
And again, probably, you know, the best graphic to use is that graphic that shows that buying power dropping off because that's just the reality. I don't think there's been, certainly not in the time that I'm here, and I'm sure that the time that my predecessor was here and his predecessor was here, HR has come in and said, in order for us to meet market, this is the percent raise that we need to be offering, and we never are able to actually meet that, with the exception of this last year. We were able to do that this last year. And it's because of that line, that decreasing buying power, because other things have kind of stood in the way. And with your help, we're in effect saying, the other things have to be set aside while we focus in on that, on this. And again, it's not without risk because, you know, we may get so far ahead of ourselves that if revenues decline and start to drop off, that we'll have to retrench on this as well. But certainly, you know, we've got to give it, the try that we've got to give it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I am with us. Mr. Pauls?
Mr. Cowell, in this survey, was there any look at benefits and what we might be able to do to attract folks with benefit changes? And do these salaries, changes in salaries affect any of the financing of benefits?
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. So in the back of the Gallagher study, one part, the other part that they did was they actually took where the information was available, those same competitors that we were looking at, and compared our benefits packages. For the most part, our benefits packages are very competitive, in many cases, lead the market in it. Now, I will say that there are, there are some that are offered. I think actually, Roanoke City Public Schools is able to offer health insurance at a much lower cost than we are able to do so. But for the most part, our other competitors, we're right there with them, with it. The interesting thing that we're, across the country that you're seeing is, one of the things that government used to be able to do is kind of highlight those benefits and in some ways, offset some of what we couldn't do against private sector. That's becoming less and less common and less and less available. So one of the things I think we will be looking at as we go forward and in conversation with the employees is, if compensation is becoming more important than some of the benefits that we have offered and are kind of leading on, is there room to change those benefits to free up more money to go toward compensation? That may be one of those conversations that we go forward. But, no, really, I think the things that we've changed, again, adding some flexibility with, you know, allowing hybrid work environments, adding some mental health and wellness benefits that we did not previously have. We added three mental health days to our overall leave days. You know, those have kept us still on the leading edge of that, but it appears that the market is responding to those at this moment less than they are compensation. And we just have to see if that's going to be a long-term trend.
So the second part of that question was about, you know, any of these salary changes, are those going to affect, you know, like retirement and stuff like that?
No.
Those higher costs?
No, because we would, as an example, if, you know, I mentioned to you earlier that we already had anticipated an increase in the pension tied to our actuarial liabilities, and then with the returns on investments, we have to add additional in there. We would, we would take that first, even if it meant we had to stretch the compensation out a bit further. We would not jeopardize the solvency or the viability of the pension in exchange for the compensation. So no, none of, none of what's being proposed or envisioned currently does that, and if it did, we would default into those other benefits and shoring those up versus making the movement in compensation.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cowell. And let me commend your staff for the hard work, and I know this is a dubious task force. You said something that I think sometimes people forget, that the city run-up was four years ahead of the General Assembly in increasing the minimum wage, the $15 minimum wage. I think that's significant because there's still a lot of cities in this, in the Commonwealth that hadn't done that, got there yet, so.
Yeah, I believe we still lead the region in our, in our minimum wage, among other government entities with it. Now, eventually, though, they'll be required to get to that point as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me interrupt your flow of ordinances here as well. And just as a reminder for the clerk, you have a second motion on it, so it's ready, I think, for voting. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I'm going to go back to my clerk to bring me back up to speed on where we are here. I think we're on the second ordinance. Is that accurate?
That's correct, and we need to call the roll.
Call the roll, Madam Clerk.
All right. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're, on the third ordinance, need a motion.
I move the third ordinance.
Second?
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance amending the pay plan for officers, employees, council-appointed officers, and constitutional officers of the city, which became effective July 1st, 2022, adopted by city council on May 9th, 2022, by ordinance number 42355-050922, to add a $2,000 referral bonus to police department employees who refer qualified candidates for hire to the police department that successfully complete and graduate from the police academy, providing for an effective date and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you again, Ms. Cowell, and let me recognize, I'm sure, a person that heard a lot about salaries and compensation, Angela Vernon out there, who was our director of human resources. Good to see you. So I'm sure you've had a lot in the airfoil, a lot of things in that, but we appreciate.
She's not done hearing all of those things. She's just begun.
Okay. Well, I just want to recognize you being here at council session this afternoon.
Yeah, and I definitely want, while you're doing, I definitely want to acknowledge the work Chris Parker in her office has done as well, and John Sanders and the help that they've offered, and the city attorney in his office, too, because all of these have involved everyone, and actually, everything going forward is going to involve everyone as well. So thank you.
Well, thank all of you all, and I, and I see the others, I don't see Ms. Vernon up burning up here that much, but thank all of you all for the work, the commitment and the time and the frustration, I'm sure, that came about. It's very much appreciated. Thank you. All right, we're now down to the comments of the city manager. And I'll recognize Ms. Cowell for any comments that he'd like to make.
Thank you, and I apologize because I actually have some. So I'm gonna pass around yet another thing, but I'm not going to go into detail on, on this. So what, what I am passing around, and I will email this to you as well, is as discussed earlier in the meeting and as referred to, at this meeting, we typically provide the draft update of the strategic plan, and that's what's being passed around, is that update. At your, at one of your recent updates, I had provided kind of an outline of the items. Those are now incorporated in this. I would ask you to take a look at this information. It will also be available publicly after today. And then we'll come back on the 21st is when we'll seek approval for, for this plan. So just wanted to make sure you knew that that was there. And again, I'll, I'll forward to you a digital copy of this information as well. The, the other item I wanted to highlight was actually, Councilmember Moon Reynolds had asked that I share with you all publicly, the update on the Northwest Hub. And so, as you all know, there, this project is a partnership with Goodwill and, and others. And this is combined ARPA funding as well as Goodwill funding, as well as other funding that they're currently in the process of, of raising. And this is the re-envisioning of the Goodwill campus there in Melrose, predominantly to address the, the lack of a grocery in that area. But the idea of the hub is actually to expand beyond just the grocery. The grocery is the anchor, but it's always been envisioned to be a part of it. And that overall would include a grocery as well as a health and wellness facility, as well as a banking and financial institution. And Goodwill is adding to it as, as well, and an adult high school, which is essentially for those that did not graduate from high school, this is an alternative, not to getting your GED, but actually getting your high school diploma. And alongside that, an act, a certification in another area, so that when you graduate, you graduate with your high school diploma and a certification that is marketable. There are actually a couple of bills pending through the General Assembly that benefit from bipartisan support is an effort to aid in that as well. So that's all in that hub. Obviously, that is also requiring some literally moves from Goodwill in that Goodwill is relocating its, its offices, so its office part of its operations. They will be relocating downtown relatively soon. And, and that is to free up space for these items that we've discussed. And of course, we've, we've, for a few years, have been an anchor at the end of the building with the, the Melrose Branch Library, which will, of course, remain as a part of it. And the Kiwanis Club, in partnership with the Parks Department, has built the playground out front. The Housing Authority has built the Envision Center in the old library. So there, there is a lot of activity going on in this particular area. A few of the things that are going on currently is Goodwill has issued the, the request for proposals for design services. They have issued the request for proposal for financial services and banking, and they are getting ready to request, to issue the request for services for the, the health and wellness piece. They have also established an advisory group. That advisory group is made up of resident representatives as well as others. The city has a, a presence in there, as do some of the other potential anchors in that area. And that is to do a couple of things. Keep Goodwill advised as it moves forward these plans. It is also a way in which to get information back out into the community as to what is going on. They have also established a working group that is around really the health and wellness facility. And they just conducted, I believe, their second meeting, second community meeting associated with that. And that is really trying to figure out, what, what they're not doing is they don't want to replicate anything that's already in the Northwest community, either being served by New Horizons or other. So they're really trying to find that niche that is missing that would complement what is going on in the rest of the hub, and, and again, deliver on, on the objectives of improving health and wellness in the area. And, and then finally, they've actually already placed their orders for the equipment that would be necessary to be used in the grocery. So if you think of things like coolers, shelving, those kinds of things, and just like we talked earlier about the long, long delay associated with ambulances and fire trucks, all of that material is similarly long delayed. And so they don't want to risk any of that being, being delayed as they progress within the plan. So things are moving very rapidly in the area, and I expect they will continue to do so. Richmond has established a very strong team around him, and they're moving full speed ahead. So that is the update of where the Northwest Hub is, and certainly will keep you and the community updated as we move along. And those are my items for updates. So thank you.
I have a question, if I may.
Sure.
Has it been determined where downtown, where Goodwill is looking to relocate?
They have, but I'm not sure. They've told us.
They haven't announced it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know how public they've made it, but yes, they have.
Okay, thank you, in case I'm asked.
Yeah. No, no, and I should say, that is only their administrative offices. So they also have some job training offices that will be located outside of downtown to be more accessible for, for folks as well. I don't think they've completely settled on that location yet.
Well, thank you for that update.
Sure.
Mr. Cowell?
Ma'am, Mr. Mayor.
Uh huh.
Have they taken a look at what's already in the Envision Center and, and walked back on some of the things they had anticipated? Because there, there was some duplication.
Yeah, they, they have. And again, they don't want to duplicate anything in those areas. They're also beginning to look at both the rest of their land holdings, because remember, they own some land behind there as well, and also what is surrounding. And they're looking for ways in which to leverage what this hub might bring too. So not only are they looking for ways, obviously, to avoid duplication, but they're also looking for ways to use this to fill other, other needs. And there, I think, a couple of you may have actually talked with Richmond recently about some housing options and stuff.
We did. Ms. Sanchez Jones and I talked to him about some housing, had Virginia Housing come down from Richmond and spoke with him about that parcel. We didn't realize it was as large as it is.
Yep.
Ideal for housing.
So in some ways, I mean, it's, it, while it is not perhaps as transformational as what the Choice Neighborhood effort would have been, that the Housing Authority had tried multiple times, it, it is a way in which we can begin to kind of chip away at some of those core elements. Housing is the missing piece of this because that was the real big ask that the Housing Authority had of HUD. So that still has to be filled. But yes, they're definitely looking at those items as well.
Thank you.
All right. Any more questions?
I think that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Cowell. We're now down to item number, well, eight. Reports of committees. We have none. Item number nine is unfinished business. We have none. Item number 10, introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. There are none. And item number 11 is motion and miscellaneous business inquiry or comments by the mayor and/or members of city council. Are there any comments for members of council inquiries?
I just have a few comments.
Okay.
Just regarding the events that have happened nationally and, and locally in our area. I want to remind people to check on their mental health. I think a lot of people are referring, are using violence when at times other things appropriate, both people in the community and we're seeing police officers in other communities. And just for people to take time to check in, even just got a text from my husband earlier saying he had an aggressive patient at the hospital, but was thankful that the police responded rather quickly. So just to remind people in the community what's going on, to, to check in with themselves and with their neighbors.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. Vacancies, well, Madam Clerk, I got vacancies on certain authorities and boards. Should we go and have our meeting, close the meeting first, or should we just go right with that?
You can, you can go to the vacancies and then we can do the certification of those meetings. Either way you'd like it.
All right, because we're gonna go back into closed session.
Oh, you're going back into closed session?
We're gonna go back. All right, is that correct?
Mayor, you will wait and do that after you come out of closed session.
Okay.
Just that one, your unfinished business.
Okay. Well, we have some unfinished business, so we gotta go back into closed session. All right. With that being said, then we'll go to recess until we finish up the business. It shouldn't be too long, but we need to go back into closed session.
Mayor, you want to do the vacancies now and then come back and do the certification? Then you won't have to do your vacancies.
We can get that done.
I think we're considered in closed session.
But you can still.
We can still do the certification when you come back.
Yeah, you can still do the certification. Yes, you don't have to wait.
Well, you want to do, have we, who's gonna do the, the?
I've got this.
Okay. Let's do the vacancies on certain authorities, boards, and commissions appointed by council.
All right. For the Architectural Review Board, residency waiver for Stephen Feather, who's filling the architect position. For the Court, Community Corrections Program, Regional Community Justice Board, residency waiver for Tiffany Kefir, who was earlier appointed. For the Human Services Advisory Board, we're appointing William Best Pitch to fill the unexpired term of office for Erica Bergen, ending November 30th, 2025. For the Local Office on Aging Advisory Board, one-year appointment for Jennifer Oaks. For the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, again, this is an editorial matter, and all of these residency waivers are editorial as we've gone back through to review current appointments. For Nikki Vaudren, Voudren, sorry, for the Mill Mountain Advisory Board. For Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, residency waiver for Jerome Stevens. For the Roanoke Civic Center Commission, appointment of Sandra Vincent with a residency waiver, as well as residency waiver for Christopher Carver, who was already appointed. Residency waiver for Karen Mikolsky Carney on the Roanoke Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Appointment of Barbara Dirk to fill the unexpired term of office for Peter Volleson, ending June 30th, 2024, to the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. Residency waiver for Shane Spradlin for the Towing Advisory Board. Reappointment of Brandon McCall for a three-year term to the Youth Athletics Review Board. Reappointment of Anita James Price for a citizen-at-large, three-year term. And a residency waiver for Leela Hickman, who was an earlier appointee. And I think that is everything.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'll ask Clerk to call the roll on those names that have been submitted. And if you are in favor of that, please let it be known by the saying of all nominees. Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd?
All nominees.
Mr. Volleson?
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Mr. Pretty?
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee?
All nominees. All right. Thank you. And we'll be going into closed session for a few, a few more minutes.
But an Israeli official says Israel is sending Syria medicine blankets and tents for earthquake victims there. Israeli media say that was following a request from Russia, which plays a key role in.